Good evening, everyone. And welcome to a special meeting of the City Council of the City of Pearsall. We'll be in our space 74 at 10:00 PM. The time is 7:00 AM. The roll call, please. Mayor and Congress. President.
Julian Hernandez.
Here.
Luis Hernandez.
Here.
Sonia Hernandez.
Here.
Brenda Trevino.
Here.
Robert Villar.
Here.
Roland Zocobia.
Here.
Devina Rodriguez.
We have a call, so let us be pleased to have you on. Your location. Welcome.
Thank you, Lord, for bringing us all together here to join in a mission to bring the City of Pearsall to the future and to listen to our constituents, our citizens, and to move forward in what is in the best interest of the city and the citizens. In God's name we pray.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Any discussion and possible action regarding the City of Pearsall hosting a Hispanic festival and setting a budget utilizing cut funds? This is an action, so we need to hand the motion to this best, please. Motion to discuss. I have a second. I'm in favor. I'd like to open. Here's your message. Yes, sir.
Mayor, Council, good evening. I'm gonna try to be a little bit louder than what I've been, and I get weeks past, and I will be as loud as possible. That way I can make sure that... No, I'm not yelling at anybody, though, so I wanna make sure that that's...
No, no.
So, anyway, what you have before you is, one, is one proposal that we received for the Hispanic Heritage Festival. Now, just a little history on this. The council, I think, back in July, July 23rd, you agreed to issue an RFP for this. So, I think it, that's where we got this. Now, we've done everything, and we posted this proposal in the paper. Everything has been done according to statute. We opened the bids on the 29th, and this is the earliest we could get to potentially award this if the council wants to move forward. Again, the whole idea, now, keep in mind, this particular event was not or hasn't been budgeted. We don't have an amount, and then the actual approval of the event, to my knowledge, has also not been approved. So, anyway, just to clarify, that's the direction the staff has given to look forward, and that's what we did. So, again, we had the proposal. Mister, I wanna call you Mister Motor Mouth, but I know that that's not your name. Albert, excuse me, I'm sorry. I'm still trying to remember all the names. Albert is here. He may have questions, but again, this is just the approval of the actual event and the budget. Now, in the actual proposal, you'll see the dollar amounts that's being proposed. It's a two-day event. I believe the dates are August, October the 19th and October the 20th. The amounts that are being proposed for option A is amount of $45,000, forty-five, five-hundred... Excuse me, that's option, yeah. Budget A is $51,640, and option B is $45,540. To my knowledge, the biggest, as far as expense, is gonna be, of course, the hiring of the performers, and the venue is probably the difference as far as the dollar amount, okay? And again, Albert will probably, might have questions for him, but again, those are the budget items. That's the dollar amount that's being proposed. We only received one proposal. We didn't receive any others. And again, everybody was given due notice to put in a proposal.
Okay, for the record, Councilwoman Trevino, send them to the...
So... First of all, Mayor, Council, we need to take up a minute of time. Basically, I'm just here to answer any questions in case any of y'all have any questions and doubts that I'll answer as best as I can.
Josie, well, I do wanna give Josie a chance to explain the, provide some information. You guys have a little added information there as far as the hot tax, $50,000, that are available.
So, this right here, I'd like for you guys, is the Hotel Motel Fund. Some of the events that we have previously approved for the utilization of these funds for downtown Christmas, which is everything you dream, your Cinco de Mayo, which is a twin corner. We have other grants that are available. Claybusters is one of the grants that comes before us. We give $5,000. They're like, have a two-day event, and be able to come and ask for a grant. And then we have the firefighters' challenge, which we didn't go ahead and do this here due to the transition to employment for the 811, so that event didn't take place. So, that's everything that encompasses your community promotion through Hotel Motel Tax as to your two-day event. Currently, we actually use $89,000 out of our budgeted $150,000, so we're at a balance of $60,000. And everybody can see that at the last page, our Christmas was $60,000. We spent $35,000, so we have a balance of $24,000. Cinco de Mayo, we had budgeted $50,000. We extended it to $48,000. And the Claybusters, they came in for a grant of $5,000, and we extended it to $5,000. And then we have some at the bottom that the Christmas luncheon was taken out here, but we actually don't have the general fund, so it's $69,000 back into this account and take the general fund. So, we do have a balance of $60,000 this year to go ahead and extend if needed. There's about $25,000 that we utilize for grants, so anybody coming in that they don't have to sponsor, like Claybusters, they only spend $5,000 out of the $30,000 that we have allotted for the grants. So, that's where the X ray is, and then the Y ray. We came under for a Christmas event.
On the Christmas luncheon...
Lunchtime?
Yes. Can I speak?
Yes.
On the Christmas luncheon, I know it's 6:89 here, do, are we allowed to pull from here and then pull back?
It's because the general fund is the same account number, so it's accidentally taken out of the wrong.
Oh, okay.
So, I just actually put it into the first one, and I'll make my presentations as to what the mix-up is, and that's, you know, the best.
Okay. The other question on the Cinco de Mayo, we spent $48,000 to host a Cinco de Mayo Fest?
Yes.
And where was that Cinco de Mayo Fest held?
It was at the Sixer.
And what profit did we make from that one?
The dates are 5, 4, 5, and 5.
No profit?
No.
But we spent $48,000 to have it?
$48,000.
Okay.
Mayor. Josie, this is, this is one of the reasons that I voted against the budget, because a month ago, you were here, and the first time it was ever brought up to us about, sorry, it was like two months ago, that, about the festival, that somebody said that, I think there was an article in a paper, said that the funds had been dwindling down, and we had like $300, something thousand dollars, or $200, something thousand. What happened from that point, two months ago, to now, that we have $60,000?
This is just a line item. This is a budget for the line item. So, we're just looking at the, we're not looking at the full funding, and then your cash balance, which is your on-hand, is totally different from the budget.
And how much do we have in that?
On your on-hand, I believe it's 300...
307.
And she didn't do a budget for that successful Fiesta of the Year, $50,000, and it was a great success, right?
So, our cash on deposit for your Hotel Motel Fund, as of July 31st, 2019, we're at $382,000.
Okay. Now, that's good. See, 'cause that throws up a red flag that, wow, we only have $60,000. But, okay, now, I get it. Now, the follow-up question to this is that, how much are we collecting every three months from the Hotel Motel Tax?
Okay, our current year-to-date for July 31st, 2019, is $353,000 for year-to-date as of October, from October 1st through July 31st. We've collected $353,000.
Okay, but, yes, I understand it, but what I'm saying is that every quarter, every quarter, we get money from the Hotel Motel. How much are we getting? Are we getting $40,000, $30,000, $50,000?
I only have the year-to-date, I'm not sure what it would be for quarters, because a lot of them, some of them pay monthly, some of them pay quarterly. Your larger hotels pay monthly. If you're smaller ones pay monthly, so it's...
But from October till July, is that 352?
353.
353? Okay. Thank you.
I have a quick question. I had spoken to some personnel here that this wasn't even updated as far as the overtime's not included in here also, what was spent. And the last time I brought this issue up, nobody had a clue where we were at, and so it's kinda odd to me, rather, you know, this is a true number, since this is a true number, or when was this budget done, or when did you comprise this?
I just finished it today.
After a whole year, almost a year?
No, no, no. This is just updated as of today. I identified everything for your Christmas, for your Cinco, everything like that. I'm trying to see, but overtime, is in here?
There were some line items missing when I was reviewing the expenditures. There were some line items that were missing, one which was the overtime, and there were some other issues that still needed to be inputted that hadn't been inputted since back in December, you know?
This is straight from the system, so I don't know where we got the ones?
Well, the thing is, everybody was throwing each other under the bus.
And that's why I...
You know, and that's why, this really concerns me. I just wanna make sure everything that's involved has had their input and inputted all their information in here to make, to give an accurate figure, because I'm just, I just wanna know where we're at, because, I mean, several times I've asked, and nobody seems to know the answer, you know? So, I just wanna make sure this is a true picture now, so I can take your word that this is a true picture.
Yes, everything has been inputted. The last thing that we were waiting on was the electrical, which on, was the very last page. That was the electrical for the Christmas event, so that's what we... But I know there is some overtime on here, I'm just trying to find out what to... But everything was updated as of currently, and I look forward to it.
And what are your forecasting for this coming event for December, the Country Christmas, or...
Well, we still, we always budget $60,000, so it's dependent on council to identify whether or not they can continue with the $60,000, or decrease it, or whichever reason.
Yes, sir.
We seem to be talking about, and I'd like to know what event we're talking about. Hispanic Heritage Festival. Is there other events in the area, San Antonio, or...
Heritage, they do that in downtown. It's a big thing at the market, and you have several bands going out there.
Because the Hispanic Heritage Month begins September the 15th?
The 15th.
Runs through October the 15th, so...
It's a whole month.
It's a different month, right? And this will be on the 18th, 19th? So, what are we thinking about? Is this something that we're thinking about posting on a yearly basis? Do you think it's going to attract the numbers?
Yeah. I'm gonna answer. Sonia had brought this up to, at the last council meeting, and then I talked to her about it, you know, asking her, you know, what her thoughts were on it, and I got her thoughts, but my thoughts, when I agree to trying something different, is just to, when that Dilly Festival happened, it was, it was nice, and I said, well, maybe if we try to go a different route with an event coordinator like Dilly did it, people that are experienced with the music industry, and they market properly to what this community is, what they like, and we spend almost the same amount of money that we have been, and just to see if it'll work, and just try it out. If it's a success, then of course we'll try it, do it yearly, but just to try something different, and different marketers, because it's obvious that the few festivals that we did have, we spent a lot of money, and the turnout wasn't great. So, with an event coordinator, these people are, their profession is in music, in the industry, and they market, and they know what the community, you know, what the community likes, and just to try it out and see if it works. And the heritage is always, I always feel that it's looked beyond. We do stuff for the Pioneer Festival every year and spend a lot of money there.
I know I have a problem with the...
But that's why we, that's why she picked the heritage, you know?
Maybe I should add this from Martinez also. Do you know other events in the area along this...
No, sir, to be honest with you, Councilman, this was actually correct. Besides the San Antonio, which is obviously metropolitan, but they have it throughout the year, so we're pretty much based already on Cinco. I mean, come April till pretty much October, there's events there every, you know, weekend, but keep in mind, that's, it is a metropolitan area, so of course we can't compare to that. But one of the reasons that, from San Antonio behind us, the reason they don't really do it, is because of the fact that San Antonio does do it. Take into consideration that it tends to slow down in October because of football, which is why we kinda try to target a Saturday in the sun, because if you try to have a festival on that particular Friday, you're gonna be, the artists are gonna be paid to a duty place because there is gonna be a third group playing, so...
Yes, sir.
I have a question. I'm looking at your proposals, nothing on there, does it say anything about vendors? It doesn't say anything about the gear? Who's gonna be responsible for all that?
That is up to, that's actually up to me. I haven't, I can't put it in there, because one festival hasn't been approved. I haven't gotten a budget, so I can't, like, kinda like for the entertainers, I can't give you all an idea who the entertainers are, if I don't know how much money I'm gonna be allowed, you know? There's gonna be a lot of non-profit, and of course, profit. Vendors, I can't give you the vendors, because until I market, I don't know who's gonna approach me to, to, um, set up a booth, you know? Whether it's your arts, your crafts, or your basic fighting practice, you know? And I kinda anticipated that that question could be answered, but I honestly can't put it in there, because until I have a product to sell, I don't know who's gonna approach me for it.
Mr. Hernandez, one of the questions we had was that, if we're trying to make this an annual event, if we're successful, yes, I would like for it to try to become an actual event. I'll give you some examples. The road right south of us, Gutulla, they've been a very successful Waho cook-off, successful. People, it's galore. Down west of us, east of us, I'm sorry, Potte Strawberry Festival, galore. Further down southwest, Crystal City, the Spanish Festival.
Oh, we know that.
And we used to have, we used to have the Potato Fest, and I don't know whatever happened to that. So, we're trying to, you know, trying to promote Pearsall, you know, trying to promote, like, take an example, some of the things that I kept hearing from these hotels is that, well, y'all are digging into our pockets, and you're like, give us nothing in return, which in reality, you know, if you actually look at it, you know, it's true, because, you know, the amount of people that stay in these hotels because of the money that we put into it, it doesn't add up, you know? And the reason I'm saying that is because, yeah, they're making money, not a lot of money, but they're making, but it's not because of us, it's because of the oil field, you know? I'm pretty sure Councilman Ganar can vouch for that, 'cause, you know, he works in the oil field industry, you know, and it's picking up, it's picking up, and it's gonna pick up more. So, that's where they're making the money, but not through the City of Pearsall. And that's why if this thing gets off the ground, and it's a success like the one in Dilly was, you know, I'm pretty sure that they'll, they'll be off our backs and say, wow, you know, at least for a weekend, you know, we made galore money, you know? 'Cause according to some of the reports that I got in Dilly, you know, all those motels were booked up, you know, in Dilly. And I don't know how many motels they have, but I know they have a lot. So, like I said, I think, I think that we marketed right, you know, which I think we have an individual that has experience in marketing, you know? I saw that he has got advertisement, you know, four, $5,000 in advertising and stuff like that, and that's a key. That's a key to try to, you know, bring new people from San Antonio, try to, and that radio station that's on here, I don't know if y'all heard it, it catches all South Texans, I mean, a lot of South Texans, I'm sorry, not a, a lot of them. And so, that's what we're trying to attract, and we're trying to attract all of these other people. And then also going back to a little bit what he said about that two-day event, that we're trying to tie it in with the school, with the homecoming parade, the homecoming football game. And y'all probably know, Mr. Hernandez, being an educator, that homecoming here in Pearsall, that's one, besides the Christmas parade, that's the next biggest thing to happen here in Pearsall. And that's what we're trying to do. We're trying to, you know, tie it in and try to, you know, pump it up, you know, trying to, you know, get it going. Now, if it works great, and if it doesn't, hey, we try it.
So, homecoming is that Friday night?
Yes, Friday night, yes, ma'am.
And this will be Saturday and Sunday?
Yes, sir, Saturday and Sunday, yes, ma'am.
In the homecoming, you know, I'm having my 20th reunion, but...
And I'll be with my...
You know, 20th.
Reunion.
Oh, high school reunion. Yes, so these reunions are really big. I've been doing ours, five, 10, 15, 20, and usually the only place we go to is a bar that's open. And with this festival, they can take their kids, and usually we'll rent the park, and we'll have a family day, but after the game, they can all go somewhere. And they're already coming, rent hotels, some stay with their parents, but most of them have families and they rent rooms. And I'm so really confident with Mr. Motor Mouth, is that his marketing skills, and he's thrown a lot of dances here in Pearsall, and he knows what people like and what they don't like, and the updated music. And I think that homecoming weekend is, it's gonna be very successful, because we have that, and you're gonna have 40 reunions, 50, you know, 10-year reunions, and it's a big, big deal for Pearsall, so...
I have a comment. You mentioned all these, Strawberry Fest, and the Spanish Fest, and the Waho, but all those have one thing in common, they have, they have a steer committee, or a committee that involves the entire community that get together for years, or, and the, a combination throughout the whole year, that they start getting vendors, and so on and so forth. So, there's no way we'll be able to compete with that, not at this time in, this time, you know? But, yes, I think you have a great idea, but I just think that we do need to have some committees and all that, but that's just my humble opinion, you know, that I think we should, maybe we could do that in the future, to have committees, and so on and so forth. And he would be, you know, Mr. Motor Mouth, Albert Martinez could possibly steer that as well as the committee, since he does have the marketing capabilities and has the contact with all the musical performances and all that, you know? So, I do agree with that, but I think there's gotta be more, more to it, more involvement of the community. The more people you get invested in it, the more people would actually want to contribute to it, you know? And that's just my humble opinion.
Okay, with that being said, I agree, but we have to start somewhere. And that Dilly Festival, I know we keep referring to that, our area, meaning Frio County, hasn't seen a festival like that since, we used to throw those festivals at Polo Patino by the Catholic Church, you know? Those festivals were huge and successful, and I hadn't seen one since then. And the way Dilly did it, and they used the Hotel Motel Tax, is I was very impressed, and they used it with one event coordinator. Now, coming for next year, what I'm hearing from Dilly is now they're gonna start a committee to make it get bigger, but we do have to get our feet wet, because we need to see what works for Pearsall. And it's just, I know everybody puts hard work into these festivals, and sometimes people don't come out, you know, and there's work that gets put in it, but I feel, as a citizen of Pearsall, and know what, and, you know, I have a dance hall myself, where I've brought in bands, I don't think we're marketing correctly. So, with an event coordinator that could help, Dilly had one event coordinator, they had three bids, all musicians, all people like Albert himself, and they picked one. That one person did it all with $50,000, and those hotels were packed. I mean, I went. It was very, very nice, but now, from what I'm hearing, is now they're gonna start getting committees to make it bigger. But I think we have to start somewhere, and getting our feet wet, and see if the marketing is, if that's what the problem is, or Pearsall just doesn't like dances no more, or they don't like festivals. But I really think it has to do with our marketing, and I have a feeling that if this does get approved, that it would be very successful for Pearsall and for our hotels. We need to pay back.
Yes.
If I could just elaborate on a couple of things. One, I totally agree with what he just said, I agree with what you said, Councilman, there were. Yes, I totally agree with the fact that you can't compare the Spanish Festival, the Potte Festival, you know, all those big, that have been for, around for 30-plus years, okay? When those events come, nothing happens in this town. Nobody tries to have a wedding, or, especially me as a promoter, I don't even try to hold some kind of function, because I'm gonna, I'm gonna lose, okay? In regards to what he said, Mr. Sevobin said, we used to have a Potato Festival, and the artists that would play during those years were nowhere near the way the market is right now, okay? Very hard to afford. So, I, I think what it boils down to is, if this happens, I'm gonna have seven weeks to put it together, which I know I can do. The thing is, that we gotta get it back to where it used to be, and if it takes the first one, a second one, regardless of what it is, then that's what it is. I can't guarantee it's gonna make money, honestly, and I don't know if I'm suiciding myself on this, but none of these festivals make money. The only ones making money is the promoter, the agencies, the bands, the vendors, and stuff like that. You can't see it as the way Albert does, and she can, you can relate to this, ma'am. When I have a show, and they charge me so much, my goal is to get that plus a percentage before I even see a profit. I lose, or I make. These festivals, unless you're, like she says, the Potte, the Spanish, you know, it's just, that's just the way, it's a proven fact. I cannot stand here, any, any person that coordinates this cannot stand up here and say, I'm gonna show y'all the profit, okay? I'm personally friends with the gentleman who did the one in Dilly. He was, I was the first one to congratulate, 'cause I knew that he was gonna be successful. The only problem that I had with that was that, that was the Fourth of July, we do a Cinco. Can't compare the both, okay? Can't compare Cinco de Mayo, which is an Hispanic holiday, to the Fourth of July, which is a national.
National.
Not that we're, not that I'm saying maybe we should do away with the Cinco and do the Fourth, because now, now it's, it's a bigger holiday, okay? It was a Saturday, Sunday, and it was for free. Excuse me, I'm losing my voice, and it was just, the lineup was there, okay? And that's a big factor, okay? It is what it is, okay? If the acts are there, the people are gonna respond, and it's just, so, I mean, I gotta elaborate on that, 'cause that's, that's a very important issue to discuss, that, I mean, there's no reason why we're not in the map. The Potato Festival was around us as us, as younger kids. What happened to it? I wish I knew the answer, I just don't, you know?
So, did Dilly turn a profit, since they had so many individuals there? Does anybody know? So, did Dilly turn a profit, since they had so many individuals there? Does anybody know?
Uh, I don't.
What's your name?
Did Dilly make a profit on the attendance, or was it all to the promoters, um?
The hotels made a profit.
Oh, yeah.
The hotels, yeah.
Yeah, it's a hotel.
The hotels, of course, they are mandated by law that any, any heads in beds, fifteen, you know, the hotel tax, of course, increase is gonna go up. That's their reasonable service, but I'm just saying, did the city of Dilly make a profit?
Uh, that would be for the coordinator from the third to answer that question.
Right, no, yes.
And, yeah, I, I honestly don't know.
They provided a service, but did not make a profit.
And when it comes down to that, um, when we do these festivals, it's not for the city to make money. The city, uh, city of, the city, um, city hall to make money. What those festivals are due, they're out of hotel motel tax. That city is to, hotel motel tax is to put heads in beds, and to promote the city of Pearson. Who wins? And I'm a business owner, uh, not, well, my father is, but my family's been in business over eighty years in Pearson. And who profits from that is the businesses. There, we're, what we're doing as a city, we're promoting, we're putting Pearson on the map, we're promoting Pearson, and we're getting them to go spend money at their convenience stores, we're getting them to spend money at their Walmarts, at their HEBs, at the local flower shops, at um, any store that they can buy. That is what we're promoting. And when Dilly did this, they did what the hotel motel tax is for. They filled the beds. And when, not only did they fill the beds, their gas stations profited, their stores profited, the moms and pops profited. We're not looking for city hall to make money, because this money, we have to use this money to promote. And that's what Dilly, whether Dilly made, cause they didn't charge, and when you ask for a donation, you can't charge them. It's a donation to the city.
And I agree, because I remember one of the auditors said, the goal of the city is really to provide a service, and um, not necessarily to make a profit, but earlier you were asking, why didn't we make a profit?
Well, I'm meaning, I'm meaning, what I'm meaning is, how many people came in, okay, because we spent this money, and I know the attendance was very poor. So, if only a hundred showed up, and they're local people, nobody stayed in those hotels. Did the vendors lose out? And I'm asking, because a lot of vendors had to pay to put a booth. And they didn't break even with the food they bought, and with the drinks they bought. This is just word of mouth of what's going on. But when we just offer the, the cert-, like the whole, we're, we're giving them the, the show, and they're, we want them to stay the night. We want them to go and get up in the morning and eat at our restaurants. We have so many restaurants in town, and everybody will benefit, and that's what hotel motel tax is for.
The only rea-, the reason why I brought this up a while back was because every year when we get together during our homecoming games, they always tell, they always ask, you know, why doesn't Pearson do something during homecoming season? You know, I know Albert, he has his own um, tradi-, traditional uh, thing at the AND, you know, but there's some people that have other things that they're doing and things like that, but, you know, they've always come to me, and they've asked me, why can't Pearson do something big during homecoming season, since everybody comes in from out of town? You know, and they come, and they, they're here the whole weekend, you know, and I just thought this would be something, you know, that we could start off with, you know, and I feel that, you know, I, I feel that Albert has, you know, I mean, and, and I agree with you on, I mean, ever since we's, I don't know, you know, we've been tossing the football around as to, as to what kind of festivals we can have. We tried the deer hunters festival, we tried other things, you know, but some things worked a little better than others. And, you know, we're in a, we're, we're in a tough position, because other cities have their festivals set, pretty much. And, and so we have to find out the time when it's gonna be okay. I think October nineteenth, twentieth, nobody's doing anything that I know of. I know there's something in Hurley, uh, that weekend, but uh, around here, there isn't. So, I mean, I, I don't, I don't, I, I think it'd be worth a shot to, to try to figure out what could happen with the festival, but the only concern I have right now is, is uh, well, if we can get it done in time, but one of my biggest concerns has always been, with all these festivals, is that we use a, a lot of our city employees and uh, resources towards, towards these festivals.
Sure.
I, 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 I really don't want that to happen, cause our, our city employees have a lot of things that they need to take care of. And uh, we, we spend a lot of time and resources on the uh, Christmas festival, I mean, that, that's for sure. Uh, and we need to figure out how to get away from that, so that the city management and staff can, can get their work done as well, and without having to put on festivals for us, for the community.
No, sir, and uh, I, I agree with you a hundred and ten percent. You know, I, I see that all the time, you know, how the city of Pearson, how they're able to utilize employees, you know, and not getting paid, and a lot of them, you know, because they're on salary or whatever, not already, uh, having, you know, being out there at the, like the Cinco de Mayo, what, what was it? Fourth of July, they were out there.
They needed to enjoy it.
You know, and, and it's, it's, it's pretty sad, so I, I agree. Uh, but that's why, in, in this uh, situation, that we're trying to get a event coordinator, he's in charge. You know, we're like, okay, you wanted it, you applied for it, you got it, that's your baby. That's it, you know, uh. And, and, and I think that's where, that's where I guess your answer comes in, that, you know, I agree that, well, we should not be utilizing city employees. I think that's totally up to him, or to the coordinator, to uh, you know, get all that stuff to, uh, together.
Yes.
Okay, Albert?
Yes, sir.
I've got a couple of questions for you.
Sure.
Uh, electrical, why are you charging us electric?
Um...
If you're gonna be using our electrical. Okay, that, 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 that's wrong. That's twenty-five hundred dollars. Number two, uh, you said police security, hope you're not using our PD, uh, as part of this.
That, those, I probably put those on there, because of previous, but I mean, they're explained.
Number three was the trash can and trailer dumpster, no fee to drop off and pickup, parks and racks, six hundred dollars. What, what is this referring to?
Again, it is probably some that I had probably put in from previous, but uh, uh, I mean, I guess the question's gonna be, so regardless of the outcome, so no city services, will I be able to utilize the employees?
Employees, wait, wait, I'm, I'm not finished.
One, one second. One at a time.
Yeah.
Um, now, that, that's what concerns me. The, number four, it says city street department. And you're, you're charging us eight hundred and forty dollars for the city street department. If it's our department, why should we pay you anything for that as well? But, but anyhow, I mean, I don't, I don't want, I, I, I don't think city, city staff should be used for any of this, if we're paying this type of money, right?
No, no, and that's fine, and again, it can probably have been just something that I had used for previous, you know, because again, it's just a proposal, it doesn't mean that, doesn't mean that we have to vote exactly by, by that.
Okay, I, I guess, you know, this is my first time I see the proposal, cause I lost mine, I, I was asking Councilman for a copy. Uh, I can answer, Councilman Vereda, I can answer the uh, the one for uh, uh...
Well, well, actually, I think the only one that could answer that, it would be him, not, not us.
No, no, but I, I, I can give you, yeah, I understand, but I can give you a, uh, an idea of why he put it on there. Uh, like, for example, city street department, uh, that's a cleanup, right? I'm pretty sure that for those two-day event, that uh, nobody's gonna wanna clean it for free, so I'm pretty sure he's gonna have to hire some people to uh, to clean up. And I'm pretty sure, like, uh, four, four twenty, uh, four hundred and twenty dollars uh, a night, I think that should be sufficient. Cause uh, for example, if this thing gets approved, okay, these guys are gonna be out there at three, four, five o'clock in the morning. Okay, because the very next day, on a Monday, business is back to normal in the city of Pearson. So, believe me, you know, I'm not gonna, you know, take the hit with it, uh, take the hit, and let the city of Pearson be in uh, in, in shambles, you know, because of, they didn't do a cleanup. So, I, I can answer that one. And then also on the uh, the parks and rec, uh, six hundred dollars, I'm pretty sure that uh, y'all can look at y'all's budgets, that six hundred dollars is for a roll-off, and I'm pretty sure that uh, that six hundred dollars, you know, he can utilize it to uh, uh, ask Republic, or whatever the trash company is, to lease them out a uh, a roll-off for six hundred dollars. So, I can answer those two. Am I almost correct on those two?
Yes, you are, and again, just for the record, that those numbers could be adjusted a little bit if, if they need. Uh, for example, just, just to give you an idea, uh, we probably wouldn't be charged for the electrical, because I staff two professional uh, JY electricians. So, you know, I don't see the need to get an outside source and pay them seven hundred and fifty or eight hundred dollars, when I staff two professionals. That, God forbid something happens, but I've got people on my stand, like, on my staff.
Standby.
Yeah, so, you know.
JY is journament?
That, yes, and that's just another word for professional, and licensed.
With the, the journament?
Means you can't just have anybody that says, oh, I don't know how to touch, fix that, go in there and touch, because, one, I wouldn't allow that, you know?
So, who is the master under this?
I'm sorry, ma'am, I didn't...
You don't need the master.
The master, you say you have a journament, right?
Same thing.
No, no.
JY master electrician, some are linemen, some are electricians.
But it doesn't matter, cause it's his equipment. It's, it's his equipment, so he doesn't want...
Connected to the city whatsoever.
Well, they plug it in.
Yeah, yeah, so, do we have to have a master electrician when, when we contract out for the vendor, or no?
No.
So, just adjournments.
I have another.
Go ahead.
Okay, on the police department, I, I saw, um, Robert, um, usually they put police department, because they give the police officers, local, county, city, an opportunity to work the event, paid cash on the side. And I haven't seen this, this proposal yet.
Yeah.
Um, so what I'm assuming is that he probably put like city streets, but we're not using city workers, but we do have to pay him for that, so he could pay somebody else.
And I completely agree, but that, that's why I wanted clarification from him, um, cause I saw this, and, and, and when I see street, street department, I, I want some clarification before I sign off on something, and, and that's the reason why I was asking these questions, and that's, and, and pardon me, excuse me, i- if I stepped on your toes, but, but actually, he's the one that knows what exactly, and, you know.
Yeah, and I, the city manager.
Mayor Council, uh, we did, we did discuss a couple of things on last Friday, I believe, and we discussed some items. What, what I wanna make sure of on the council side is, is he has, again, a budget A and a budget B, and, and really, the, the big elephant there is, 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 of course, the entertainment. You're paying thirty-five thousand dollars. It, 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 both, both budgets have that amount. The other, the other, I say the smaller amounts, um, to me, of course, are not as significant. But what I would ask the council is if y'all could give us a not-to-exceed amount, if you wanna move forward, uh, as far as the budget. And then, and then, uh, if you'll allow us to negotiate that amount, I, I don't know, again, and then the venue itself, again, I would like to give some direction to the council as far as, venue, where, where we wanna have the event, if y'all can decide on your share.
And then, may I ask a question?
Yes.
So, if we're paying them thirty, thirty-five thousand, five hundred, we still have to pay for their hotel rooms?
Yeah.
No, ma'am.
We do?
No, ma'am, that, that, I can hear about that.
Oh, okay.
It's, it's, it's one big amount, uh, it's all, it's, it's all...
He'll pay it from the thirty-five.
I just probably have to, where y'all can kinda understand what it works. There's gonna be some changes on there, but if I may, uh, to Mr. Councilman Vereda, I'll just, so you, we kinda maybe get an idea. I don't want anybody here not getting the idea of what we're really trying to do. Um, it, it didn't, when y'all put it, the, you know, for the proposal, it didn't stay in there, that I was not allowed to use any, uh, utilize any of the city services, and I'm talking about parks and recreation to help out, maybe clean a little bit, or whatever. One, because if we really didn't budget for all that, then this needs to be renegotiated, because if, if, everything that has to come out of there, with security, uh, cleanup, all that, yes, there's on there, but I was under the impression, because of previous, that we were able to use, utilize some of the city. I'm wondering whether how it worked out, uh, whether they got overtime or didn't, or they had to take a day off for doing, I'm, I'm not familiar on how y'all do it, but that is very important, that we need to clarify that. And again, I just wanna refer back to the way it was then and didn't. That was not budgeted, because I was aware of how they, the, you know, other festivals, they, the municipality actually pays for it. They really...
What we were asking, but I'm sorry, certain amount of in-kind, I mean, it's called their in-kind hours, what we're doing is in-kind service. Of course, the dollars, who plays the employees is gonna come out of the city's fund, probably the general fund, if we decide to help out. If we can take dollars out of hotel fund, I'd have to ask the city attorney on that, but if, if...
If it's for a hotel unit, right, hot taxing?
Yes, for this type of event, multi-day should all come out of the...
Okay.
Okay, I wanna get back to like the bands, just because I'm familiar with the bands. Um, usually, when you get bands to come, and you're getting these big bands, um, you know, that's charging twenty thousand dollars, and they're coming, and they, you know, they are gonna stay the night, they'll say, well, I need two rooms. Even though they have a big ORV bus, and they're ready to go, these are high-dollar professionals that bring money to the city. And I think maybe you have budgeted in there, he's probably gonna pay out of the budget, to get these people what they want. Just like every superstar musician, when they go and perform at the AT&T Center, they have their strawberries, or M&amp;M's, whatever they request, the event coordinator has to set them up a back room as well. These people already come with demands. And it costs money. If you get Pepsi Torres, she'll come, just to come, because she's been playing for so many years.
Yes.
Uh, Mayor, um, I, I, if there's no other comments or...
Well, yes, there is. There's quite a few.
Okay.
Okay. Um, you were, you had your handle.
Uh, yes, ma'am, uh, again, I just wanted to address, some of those numbers are, not that they're not accurate, but that's just kinda like a ballpark, because according to the, depending on the entertainment that I do bring in, uh, I can honestly stand here and say that that, to get the ones that I'm wanting, which I'm pretty much gonna wrap up very soon, if, if, it doesn't, if it doesn't, it doesn't. But I can assure you that I'll be dipping into my agency profits and my, you know, sound line production, just to make it happen. Which is just what I'm agreeing with, with, uh, with the being here, is that they want some of the extras, you know, uh, you gotta give them a little bit of the...
They're superstars.
They want this. That all comes out of myself. That comes out of, to make it happen. It can't just all be here. I gotta give something back. And, and for the lodging, good question, ma'am, the lodging comes out of myself. I don't feel like I'm gonna lose the two headlining and acts that I possibly got coming, that I'm gonna turn them down, and I know they're gonna attract all these people, because we didn't give them two hotel rooms, present state, so, uh, but reading that we're discussing this, and I, I just wanted to mention one last thing before it goes any further, or whatever. I don't know if y'all read in my proposal, uh, which y'all meant, what, if y'all understood what the CC1 tournament was. Uh, a couple of weeks ago, my son, who plays college ball, we had the privilege of playing in Corpus for a, for Palos Correia, which is his son, who plays for the Houston Astro. Uh, I was honored enough to do an interview live on one of the Corpus Christi's uh, news channels. I got to meet him, spoke very well, we had a great meeting. I invited him that particular weekend. Uh, he is pretty much on board, just gonna work there, cut a couple of details. There was, he had eighteen teams out there, and they were still in line, trying to get on that tournament. Because of who he is and who his son is, that's one of the reasons that I put it in the proposal, because if I can do it, it's a two-day tournament, uh, which would mean, if you do the math, eighteen times the minimum of fifteen sets of parents, we're gonna have some people in those hotels.
Good for you, Mr. Martinez.
It, it's, I'm using it as a tool to help this proposal be, yes?
Yes.
Okay, uh, so, of, of the two venues, which do you, are you leaning towards? That, that's what I'd like to know.
Um, I'm okay with both. Uh, the only thing is that I, I will say that, being that the city has purchased the civic center, I would think that maybe y'all wanted to utilize it for that. But there's also option B, to make it in the downtown area. It's just gonna cost you a little bit more, unfortunately. But, I'm not so much with the downtown, not that I'm ruling it out, the only problem is that when you're gonna have that kind of capacity, we're gonna start seeing people parking, going east, and we're gonna get a lot of cars parking in people's driveways, leaving their personal trash on people's driveway, and all it's gonna do is flood the city with...
And increases liability too.
But, for the record, I'm not saying I'm gonna rule it out.
I think you got your option A and B reversed.
Okay.
Option B is the civic center. Option B is the Civic Center, option A is downtown.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Civic Center is more controlled, gated, security is a lot easier to...
Well...
Hmm? Lighting, yes.
So, um, I have a question. So, this is just for event coordinator, we still have to vote for the event?
Yes.
Exactly.
This is what you...
We need to hear before we go.
We need, we need, we're going to set the event...
Right, this is, this is, again, what the first item is, it's, it's, uh...
Yeah, the second one.
Yep.
Setting it to avoid debate.
And setting a budget for the item A, which is what we're doing. And then, if you want to get into the details as far as the event, I would say you do it as B, but...
Mayor, can I say, can I say a comment?
Just one second, you finished?
Yes.
Good. Okay, so I know, um, also, some concerns is like the, the timing. Um, seven weeks is good enough time. I've brought a twenty thousand dollar band in five days. So, I, 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 just from experience, to put people at ease, seven weeks is a, is a good amount of time to get it coordinated. Do you agree?
I do agree, and, uh, I, I totally agree, but it just also depends on the headlining act.
Yes.
That, you know, because there's a lot of them available, but if, if you want the, the head, the real headlining act, which are going to cost, then it's...
Can you call the tiguerillos?
And just, the, the what, I'm sorry?
The tiguerillos, can you try bringing them?
Well, uh, actually, I mean, being that it is what it is, I've, uh, I've taken a deal for Saturday night in Seagull for something.
Oh, those are good. Those will sell itself.
Yeah.
That's the big band I brought, in three days.
I don't know.
And it was loaded.
So what is, like, if it's a two-day event, that some of the, I mean, the bands play at night mostly, so what's going to happen during the day?
Um, various things, we want to see, of course, uh, according to being that it's a Hispanic heritage festival, uh, I've already communicated with, uh, Brody Nelly and Petula for, uh, for Brody Cola Mariachis. I have, uh, two, uh, Hispanic actors who actually, uh, might be joining us that day. I'm talking about taking chop on people.
From Blood and Blood.
Those are already talking with, and, and another gentleman. Uh, just, there's, I just think it's time to, to do this stuff, to do these events, starting, I can say at three, three, four in the afternoon, to start showing that there's some activity going throughout the day, and we build it up, and we build it up, and we build it up, and... Build it up? But lots of activities, Mr. Head on this to answer your question, so.
I would, uh, this, uh, this event in Corpus, was, was it baseball?
Yes.
It was, it, yes, sir.
Was it little ones or big ones?
No, uh, both.
Both.
From P week to eighteen.
We signed up for that one, and we couldn't get in.
Because one of the things that, uh, that I would recommend if it goes through, is that there's another thing that you can tie in with the school, is the fields, the field at the school, because there are eighteen teams. You're probably going to need like two or three fields.
Yes, we actually had talked about that, and I, 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 which, not to get off the record, but I had already, uh, called the city to find out what it would cost this gentleman, and I was quoting a price of fourteen hundred dollars. This gentleman said he's paid less than that for that, but he, if we can, maybe, I'm not saying waive it, or maybe get some adjustment for the use of our, because I did mention to him that we probably have one of the nicest, uh, baseball fields in South Texas. But yes, I was giving that...
And then, of course, you could tie it into D also, you know.
Yeah, and, and again, it's, that's why I proposed, because that's what I'm trying to work out to where we can get everything.
All righty. Any, any more discussion?
Mayor Council, the only thing I would add, is one last thing, is on the in-kind services, I, I, from what I gather, it looks like the Parks and Rec and the city's street department, as far as what we're going to have to pay them for overtime, is going to be more. I think the amounts that we have here, eight hundred and forty dollars and six hundred dollars, I would venture to say that we probably have some staff out there that'll be working. Um, that's not included in this dollar amount. So I wanted to make sure the council was aware that, that that amount, again, I wasn't, I don't think we were clear on that. The Parks and Rec, you're, well, I guess in-kind services, what would you need as far as like city staff? If you're, if you're asking for assistance, how many people, hours, how, how would that work?
Um, I guess basically, I mean, we don't, we don't need the entire city employees out there.
No.
We would need just a few out there, you know, as far as helping clean up, of course, all that. Uh, some organizations maybe go out there and help us as, as well. But, uh, we're going to need some kind of security as well.
I mean, volunteer to work overtime. Not volunteer their time.
I think if it can, if it can be worked out with our, our city management in terms of in-kind, so we're not pulling people too much, and we're not paying a lot of overtime. Because I know that some of our festivals have really gone over in, in terms of the amount of time that employees have spent, uh, even during the day, on some of these events and stuff, so. It can be worked out with the management, you know.
We can figure it out, I just... I, I would take advantage of the employees get paid, because I know that in times what we've done is, is we've sent them home early, and we really had to get away from sending them home early during the week, uh, because they worked over, or hours during the weekend. So, so that's why I'm saying is there has to be some, some overtime that has to be paid, because it does, it does affect operations that we're sending them home during the week.
And then it's coming from hot tax, too.
Yeah, so, yes.
All righty. So where to set a budget utilizing...
I, we gave me fifty-one, and...
Yes.
And the one that I proposed, I have...
All righty, so, um, yes, sir.
So, so, no, I'll make most, what can we dedicate it to?
Well, well, we, well, we had to put that back on the agenda, because we were already passed to dedicate it.
Dedicate the...
Remember what we, we, we voted in name to, um, remain the Civic Center to...
So why can't we just...
Yeah, I think we just have to approve the budget right now, the proposal.
Yeah, I was saying, that's what we asked for.
Yeah, we have to, uh, just approve the amount, for him to bring a proposal.
We can bring that back, um...
Yeah.
The agenda later. But we're going to rename it to... I know, but I'm trying to... Oh, yeah, 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 okay.
We weren't here.
John Street.
It was before the election.
Do we need George Street?
Yes.
Well, he's going to be a superstar wanting the M&amp;Ms.
All right, let's get back to the agenda. Item, which one we need to approve first? Should we, because we, A, so let's entertain a motion to discuss, to address item A, four A.
Mayor, I'll make a motion. Make a motion that we amend the budget of the twenty-eighteen, twenty-nineteen budget. Uh, the, uh, hub funds, uh, budget, uh, for fifty-two thousand dollars, uh, to utilize for the, uh, hosting of the Hispanic Heritage Festival.
And, and... Then there's to be more discussion.
With the in-kind amount.
Councilman, so what we have to think, the one clarification I just had, uh, with Mr. Motormouth here is, is the amount. He's asking for forty-eight thousand. He had contingency dollars in there for one, or the other was fifty-five thousand. So the, the higher dollar amount is fifty-five thousand. I saw fifty-two. Yeah, fifty-one, six, forty, and then he had a contingency of three thirty-six. So I, I, I mis-calculated that, I thought he was asking for fifty-one thousand, six forty.
So rescind your motion. Are you rescinding it, or are you keeping it at that amount? Hold it, it's there. What are you looking at?
If you're doing not, if you're doing not to exceed, they still have time for working out to get it back forward.
Rescind it, and so not exceed the fifty-five.
That lots of work out the details.
I'll go ahead and rescind my motion, then.
Okay. Yes, council.
Motion to, uh, approve hosting of the Hispanic Heritage Festival, and then vote you not to exceed fifty thousand.
Fifty? He needs fifty-five.
Forty-eight?
Not to, not to exceed the, not to exceed.
That's what, that's why he rescinded his.
Yeah.
Because he put fifty-two thousand.
Did you say forty-eight?
He said forty-eight or fifty-five, remember, there's budget A and there's a budget B.
Okay, and budget, budget B is... Maybe forty-eight out there.
He would need forty-eight to budget B, and then if it's forty-eight, the, the budget A is fifty-five. So he's, what I misunderstood is he's, if you add the fifty-one thousand, six forty, and he's asking for an additional three thousand, three sixty for budget A, that gives you fifty-five thousand dollars.
Three thousand?
Sorry?
Yeah, it's in the red.
It's in the red.
No, 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 it leaves, it says, it, it's not that he needs it, it'll, it'll be left after...
I'll, I'll, I'll let him explain.
Well, I, I, then I'm misreading this.
Yeah, well, basically, what I've, the reason I have two separate amounts is because, depending on the location, uh, I tried to be as thorough as I could, I didn't want to take more money than I needed to host that Civic Center. It wasn't going to utilize all that amount of money. But if we ended up having to do it like downtown, or it's going to incur more costs, then I, I have to ask for, for, for more. Maybe my breakdown should have been a little bit, you know, a little different, but, uh, so basically, what it was such is if you have it at the Civic Center, I need forty-eight. So we're going to have it downtown, we need fifty-five. There's more costs.
So your motion carries. Your motion stays, stands, not to exceed fifty.
Not to exceed fifty.
Okay. There's a motion, you have a second?
Second.
All in favor, by show of hands. All in favor? Motion here is four to all opposed. Four to one, so are you guys voting?
I'm s- I'm sorry, I...
Okay.
Okay.
Do you need, there's a second, there's a motion, uh, not to exceed fifty thousand. There's a second, not all in favor for that, by show of hands, please.
Not to exceed fifty thousand.
Okay, that's what you put. All opposed? Some motion carries.
So you can't ask for more than fifty?
Again, I'm sorry.
You can't ask more than fifty.
We can, we can work with it.
That, that would be fine. That would, that would be fine. And, and just for the record, I tried to be as, tried to save as much as I could. There's no point in asking for fifty, if I don't need to do fifty, you know. So, uh, if fifty is, that's, that's fine, we can work.
Because we're also going to have some...
It's the proposal for the...
Yeah, but he's...
He rescinded your mouth.
But he's saying to have it over there at the Civic Center.
The reason I voted against it, because I don't want it at the Civic Center. We already tried it at the Civic Center, it does not work. I want it at downtown. That's the reason I voted against the motion. Thank you.
Jary, propose.
Yes, ma'am.
So I, 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 I'm for B, discussion possible. Action awarding bid for Hispanic Heritage Festival event, four minutes. This is an action. Item, need to entertain a motion to discuss, please.
What do we have?
Motion to discuss. All in favor? Discussion? Further discussion? I think we've kind of hand everything out, iron everything out. Okay, if not, we, um...
Make a motion.
Okay.
Make a motion that we go with, uh, option A.
No, 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 this is to ward the bid for Hispanic Heritage Festival.
The bid?
Yes.
For coordinator.
For the coordinator, not for the location.
Not for the location, but for...
It's for the coordinator. We come back to do the location.
Yeah.
Whenever he puts the location, he puts the location in his bid.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to go ahead and make a motion to go ahead, uh, go ahead and, uh...
We're due for the festival.
Hire an event coordinator, uh, I'll work with him, he says, sorry, event coordinator.
Second. All in favor, by show of hands. Motion carries, your answer. Congratulations, thank you.
So now he's just hiring as an event coordinator?
All righty, item five, public hearing, entertain a motion to open public hearing.
Motion.
Second. All in favor? The time is eight o'clock four. Um, public hearing on a proposal to maintain a tax rate at point eight-nine-one-zero for one hundred valuation of properties on the tax rolls in front of receiving here. Please propose tax rate exceeds the more effective rate of the rollback tax as calculated on the chapter twenty-six tax. Yes, sir.
Uh, Mayor Council, uh, as, as mentioned in our previous budget meeting, uh, the tax rate, we're proposing stay the same as last year's tax rate of eighty-nine cents. Um, as you can see, the publication that went out, the notice, the tax, as far as taxes, again, the proposed tax rate's eighty-nine cents, last year's tax rate was eighty-nine cents. It's point eight, eight-nine-one-zero, to be exact. The effective rate is point eight-five-five-five-eight-two, and the rollback rate is one point one-four-nine-four-nine-five. Uh, again, this was a publication, uh, it was published this past... So anyway, that, that is the first publication of, of two that we need to... There's another publication coming out next week.
Yeah, I, I just have some questions. I had a couple of business people come, called me, and I told them, they were asking if the tax rate went up, and I said it's the same as last year. Um, I guess they were looking at, I don't know, something was posted. They said, "Well, it doesn't look like it's quite the same." They just wanted clarification that it is the same, unless they were looking at numbers that were not the same.
The, the proposed tax rate is the same, as far as the, the, the rate, it's eighty-nine cents. The year before, it was eighty-nine cents, in two thousand seventeen, it was eighty-nine cents. So it hasn't shifted the rate. Now, um, that's, as far as the explanation, it's, it's stayed at. Now, I understand that you did, you do have more value to the tax rule. So you, that's why you are seeing big significant increases as far as the additional value. Part of that was, again, was due to the annexation, uh, but, but there is more value to the tax rule. So there are more dollars that are going to be put into it.
But the tax rate is still the same.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes.
Okay, my question to you is, the point eight-nine-one-zero, then we generate, if you just speak in that way, then it'll be, what's your budget?
Yes.
They came up to a question. What is, what is your budget?
The tax levy, we, we call the tax levy, there's two point seven, okay, two, two million, seven hundred and eighteen thousand, three hundred and eighty-four dollars.
Just the top fifty, so it's, uh, and... And you have this, um, right now, you just approved A, and about fifty, fifty thousand, about fifty-five thousand. I know there'll be, there is not a forty, right?
That is...
You do have ample space there.
It, it's, it's a different funding source. The, the funding source that, that we pay for events like that comes from a hotel occupancy tax, which is a different fund altogether. It doesn't come out of property tax.
It's not getting paid from the property tax.
Exact, yes, ma'am.
The landlord tax.
Yes, ma'am.
But your landlord may be generating two, two million, seven hundred...
Yes, ma'am.
Based on that eighty-nine cents.
Yes, ma'am. Yes.
And you are comfortable with, um, your budget for the whole, for the whole year?
I should...
And you're going to be quite as all...
I can't say that I'm comfortable, but, but it, it's a budget that we, we have to work with, so...
They have to work with.
Yes, yes.
It's coming out okay?
Yes.
Mayor? I just wanted to, um, for people to know, she was our tax assessor for forty-plus years, and she was really good. I was a little girl going and paying my grandparents our taxes.
She's in crazy, sir.
Forty years. But, yeah, thank you for coming. Yeah, she always comes.
You're here for the service internship.
Yes, yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
I think, I think, uh, on that point, we have a hundred and fifty thousand budgeted for, uh, these events, therefore. You, community promotions, community promotions.
I, I believe so.
I have the hotel tax.
Yes, yes.
So this, this was...
So you have a different part of the...
Yes, different part.
Different part for your...
Yes.
Activities that...
We, we cannot expend, the hotel occupancy tax cannot be expended of, there's certain things we can spend, yes.
Thank you. We have a discussion.
Mayor, can I ask a question? All relates to the budget and positions, I would like to ask, what relates to you?
Not at this time, you should have come to... Not at this time, you should have come to the budget hearing, this is, well, the public hearing.
I think you have a budget, there's a, there's a budget approval, I believe.
Budget approval?
Uh, when is that, that's scheduled for?
You'll have your own.
And I can be, questions all relates to individual positions?
September twenty-seventh.
September twenty-seventh, but even then, I think we'll have a discussion item, uh, the next council meeting, you could be, be part of the discussion, you, you wanna?
I, so, I'll ask you.
No, today's just for the taxes.
Sue, um, are we to the closing here? Everybody, questions answered? Any further concerns?
I have a last quick question, uh, Karen Garcia, have you gotten any calls on the INS, um, on how we should do?
I have not received any calls. Uh, I have received any calls. Answer your question.
I have a time. Uh, Mayor, I'll be, uh, cause I went for my vote beside, um, I'll be voting against the, uh, tax rate, uh, simply with the fact that, uh, I was against, I voted against the budget and, uh, my philosophy was that I want to go down on the taxes, I don't want to keep them up, you know, cause I think that this council in the past four years has gone drastically up in, you know, property tax, so that's why I was hoping that we were financially prepared, we have some reserves in the surplus to be able to start moving down the, uh, tax rate, but that's the reason I'll be voting against the, uh, tax rate.
You have a comment?
Is there any wiggle room to decrease the taxes that we need bid that would provide some relief or, or it has to maintain the same?
Well, again, that's, that's really a policy decision that the council would have to make as far as reducing taxes. I mean, the only, the different, the thing, what would happen on that is you have to, if you cut taxes, then you have to decrease, decrease, um, your.
Services.
Yeah, services, whatever that may be, whether that's, whatever that is, so you could, that, that's the option.